We have no public hearings tonight. However, we do have a presentation, a special report from Wolf Teaser. I would call on an executive from Wolf Teaser now to make the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Longfellow, and I'm from the accounting firm of Wolf Tesser &amp; Company in Pekin. And we are delighted to have been able to be your auditors, your financial statement auditors, for the year ending April 30th, 2016. And you have in front of you a bound financial statement from us, which is our final report out to you. However, the numbers in it are all the numbers of the village. So, a reminder that they're your financial statements, your numbers, your responsibility, our responsibility is to report on whether they are fairly presented. And we're very happy to report that you have a clean audit opinion. Things are going very well at the villages, I'm sure you expected. So, rather than try to flip through the report, sometimes it turns into, "Go to page 25, go to page 18." So, I put together a brief PowerPoint, just hitting some of the high points, and then, of course, you have the report to take home and go through at your leisure. It's exciting stuff. So, the first thing I wanted... I'm gonna turn it on. There we go. All right, which way? Is it this way? There we go. Okay. The first thing I wanted to do is just kind of go through what types of funds the village has, from an accounting perspective. So, there's three types of funds: governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary. Your governmental funds are those that you receive tax dollars for those funds. So, you can see there the list of governmental funds. Your proprietary funds are those which you charge a fee for services. So, your gas, water, and stormwater are your proprietary funds. And then, your fiduciary funds are your police and firefighter pension funds. Okay? First item that I wanted to note is that we noticed that currently, your social security fund is kind of rolled up in your Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and that's okay. But if you could clean it up just a bit more by pulling that fund out and separately stating that. So, that is one recommendation from the audit that...for you to consider. Another item that we wanted to make sure that we reported on is a change in accounting method. And I don't know how meaningful that is to anyone, because I don't know everyone's financial backgrounds or not in the room. But you were previously reporting on the accrual basis of accounting, which is where you're showing all of your receivables, all of your payables, deferrals, everything as complex as possible. And sometimes then it's hard for you, as a user, to read the report and really understand, "Okay, but what taxes just came in this year and what went out this year?" Because now, it's all convoluted with receivables and payables. So, there's no reason why you had to report accrual basis. So, we went ahead with management and changed that reporting method. So, the financial statements that you'll be looking at this year are modified cash basis. So, those items that are listed there and a few others would be in a previous report that you may still have and not in this report. So, except for in your proprietary funds, we still want to be able to see, "Okay, well, what water bills are outstanding that would be accounts receivable." And so, modified cash allows us to modify as needed. So, if there's something in particular that someone wants to see in the future, then we are certainly open to discussing that, to show that presentation, because we can modify it as needed. One other item of noteworthyness is that there was deficit spending in the general fund, which was not a surprise. When the budget was created, there was budgeted deficit spending in the general fund. In fact, it's less than what was budgeted. So, it's not horrible news, it's not a surprise, but just a reminder that that is the case, and it can't go on forever, right? Which I believe brings us to the next slide. So, these are the cash balances. So, in the general fund, there's four and a half million dollars there. So, you know, you could deficit spend for a while at that rate, but not forever. And of course, villages, when you do a project, you do them big, and it's a lot of money. So, it can get used up quickly. I did also want to note, as I was thinking through this today to present it, that I didn't round these numbers, and maybe should have, but they also tie directly to the financial statements. So, if someone wanted me to send the presentation to you electronically, I'd be happy to do that, and then it might be helpful for you to be able to say, "Oh, okay, now I can find that number in the report somewhere." So, I'm gonna go with that for why they're not rounded. That would be an advantage. All right. We always like to touch on debt that an entity has, just to make sure everyone is aware of what your debt is. So, there is debt on 180 Detroit Avenue, which was Farm &amp; Fleet, right? Yeah. And so, there's still a million eight, almost a million nine outstanding there, and at a hundred and thirty-three thousand a year is what you're paying interest-free on that. Okay? There's also a bank loan for the new fire station. That one's almost paid off, and that's paid out of the general fund, so that will help, depending on what projects you get into, that may help with the deficit spending, because only one more year there of paying a half a million dollars on that. So, that'll free up. Some proprietary fund information, just showing revenues. Sometimes it's nice to have an idea of what kind of revenues you're bringing in, in those areas where you're charging a fee. So, water and wastewater, six million dollars revenue, natural gas, close to three million, and stormwater, one million. And that's the revenue side. And then, this is your operating income before considering depreciation. So, um...is that number right? Seems weird.
It's identical. Same number.
It is the same number. What's going on? Well, let's find it in the report, why don't we? They do align as far as, you know, nothing's completely out of whack. They still go down the same way. So, it's on page 10 of your financial statement. So, operating revenue, there is the six million, one-one-six. And then, about five lines down from there is operating income. So, a million six for water and wastewater, nine hundred thousand for municipal gas, and six hundred thousand for the stormwater. So, all good, all profitable. And then, fixed assets, for those who have their financial statement open, if you go back a page, page nine is your balance sheet for your proprietary funds. And so, these are your fixed assets. It's approximately eight lines down or so that you can see these totals. The two million dollars for natural gas, and twenty-five million and ten million. There are a couple of just written policies that we recommend that the board consider. One is a capitalization threshold for fixed assets. There's not a clear policy for what dollar value you're gonna say that something is a fixed asset. And certainly, you can do that by category, so by buildings and equipment, and computers and vehicles and that kind of thing. So, writing up a policy for that, we're recommending. An investment policy, also recommending, which Julie has said is already in the works. You know, that's just helpful for...there's not really a lot of great, safe options for governments as far as investment goes, but putting something, some thought into something and summarizing that on paper will allow future boards going forward to know, "What are we allowed to invest in, and what are we not?" So, recommend that. And then, fund balance treatment is mostly an accounting, counting jargon item, but your fund balance is your equity, essentially, and there are categories of equity that...sometimes equity might be restricted from an outside source, from a grant that you receive that says you can only spend a certain way based on an outside source. That would be a restriction. Sometimes, there's also what's called committed and assigned. So, there are these categories that fund balances fall under, and so, we just recommend putting those in writing. And there are some guidelines about that in the financial statements. If you go through, there's some general explanation, too, so that you could start with that and then make it more specific. And then, if you could turn to the letters, we have a couple of separate letters, separate from the financials. The one-page letter is the internal control communication letter, and this is the letter where if we find a concern with internal controls, that we comment in this letter. So, the item that we commented about is down in italics, near the bottom, and it has to do with tracking gasoline sold to outside entities. At the time that we performed the audit, there were opportunities for a better system to be in place, for making sure that billings were going out timely and collections were coming in timely, and just some paperwork surrounding that. And since we've written this and sent it back to the mayor and to Julie, we've happily been told that they've already put the system in place. So, that's fantastic. This was something that needed to be improved and has already been taken care of. So, kudos to management for that. Okay? And then, the other letter is called Communication with Governance. And again, you can read through the details of this on your own. I wanted to go to page two at the bottom. Other audit findings or issues. You'll note there is where we listed out the policies that I've already made reference to. Okay? So, that's where you can find that. And then, as you go to page three, the first item is the social security fund being broken out, which I've also addressed already in the presentation. The next item is just an accounting item about how to record bad debt expense. Easy fix, probably already fixed. The third item is, again, just an accounting, an accounting shift of the way reimbursements have been recorded, a recommendation that we have there. Again, these are recommendations, nothing, you know, absolutely critical that would change our audit opinion. If it weren't changed, it would not. But then, the last item is something that we've talked with Craig about. We would like to recommend that the village consider passing a new and more thorough ordinance detailing out the rates for gas utility billings. So, the ordinance itself is somewhat vague at this time and could be improved. So, we would like to help be the catalyst to say, you know, "Yes, that's important to us to be able to go to the ordinance and say, 'This is exactly how the calculation is working.'" We didn't find any problem in the bills or in the calculation. There's no, there's no problem to report. We would just like the details of the ordinance to be cleaner, so... And Craig has said that he would talk to that if anyone has concerns about it.
Very much in support of that. We've been doing the same thing for 25 years, and this is something that we had a good discussion on that needs to be just cleaned up ordinance-wise.
So, otherwise, we, you know, didn't, we could talk all night, be accounting nerds, and talk all night about the numbers, but I don't think any of you want that. But we are more than happy, Virginia and I have left our business cards. Virginia Love is the audit manager, who, if I'm honest, has done eighty percent of the work on this. So, and the firm owners are Leslie Wierich and Chris Schwartz, and we thank you for your business and the opportunity to be the auditors for the village. Are there any questions? Yes?
Craig?
I just wanted to clarify, obviously, the public sees all this, but when you talk about the debt at 180 Detroit, just to clarify, that we're receiving annual payments to cover that.
That's true.
So, that's not a debt. I mean, it's a debt, but we're receiving that back. If they were to go default, there's other means to take care of that.
We'd get a new, improved building back.
Exactly. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Excellent point. Thank you. Yes, that is an excellent point.
And as far as the fire station loan, just when you look at the budget, we do budget out of, and I talked to Julie today again about this, but there is an additional 5% gas utility tax that was passed a long while back that basically goes towards that. So, if you look at the gas fund budget, there's a 5% franchise fee and a 5% gas. That was the intent of where that went. So, when that comes off the books, I think that's something, the gas utility tax should be addressed, whatever that is. I think the board should at least look at that.
Julie, have you got something you'd like to add?
No, but I'd like to thank Heather and Virginia. They were great to work with. For them coming in as new auditors, they, you know, they picked up very easily on what our, how our records were done, and they were not troublesome at all. So, it was really great working with them. And like we said before, when we put this out for bid, they came in at the lowest bid, but they've also done a great job for that amount of money. I think we did a really good job picking who we were gonna have.
Well, thanks to you for making this election. I would like you two to put your hands over your ears. I don't want you to hear this, but this audit was done for less than half of what previous audits cost. And that's, thanks to Julie for arranging this, and thanks to you folks for doing such a great job.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And their staff, you know, back at ya, I guess, as Ellen says, right? Because their staff was wonderful, prompt. Sometimes, we have to wait for a very long time for information, or it's incomplete, or the staff's not helpful in trying to figure it out, and none of that was the case here, so...
Ginger, did you want to?
I just have one. First of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the excellent service and the new suggestions that are already being implemented. One quick question regarding the investment recommendation policy. Would that apply also to the police pension fund investments, too?
Uh, I mean, there's, sure, there could be a policy in place, definitely. I don't know that the policy would be the same policy.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. Okay.
Right. I think probably a different policy for each.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
To partially answer that question, investments for the police pension fund are set by statute of what percentage is and where you can invest.
So, in other words, this is just the village, the village policy that it would not affect that in any way. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. We have another presentation, a joint presentation, a duet, if you will, between Chamber EDC and Tourism on the Holiday Asl.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Leigh Anne Brown with the Chamber and the EDC. And when I started in May, looking at our schedule and other organizations in town, and our goal to promote our community, the Tourism Association came to mind right away, and Susan and I met and talked about our schedules and how we're promoting Morton, and how the Chamber needs to promote events. We don't necessarily want to take on any more events, we just want to help others in promoting events. And holiday season came around, and looking at the schedule, the Chamber annually promotes the Shop Small on Small Business Saturday, and then, the Tourism Association has their Holiday Asl, which has been a longstanding event now. And there was a lot of duplication in the connecting with the businesses and promoting the businesses, coupons, activities, and so, we were able to get together and create a partnership, which I hope to continue to do more of throughout our community. And it's been great to work with Susan and the Tourism Association members on bringing this together. Things are costly these days in promotion and advertisement and the less resources out there, so the better that we can pull together and really leverage what we have available to make these events great and really to help support and promote our community. So, just want to provide a quick update, just something fun to report back to everybody on combining I Shop Morton, which now entails Holiday Asl and Shop Small. And timely, today in the mail arrived the Shop Small bags, so you all have one to use and help us promote Shop Small during the event. So, you have a packet in front of you, just want to quickly run through kind of some of the big items and activities that will happen over, basically, a little over a week now, November 18th. We'll start with Holiday Asl, and then, it'll go through Shop Small, which is Saturday, November 26th. And I'll let Susan, she wants to go through a few of the highlights with Holiday Asl. And again, you have all the promotional information there in your packet.
So, we just wanted to touch base, we've already touched base with Chief and about the community tree lighting, which is going to be held in the plaza. There's actually a crew gonna be out this weekend, hanging Christmas decorations and decorating the tree, and getting everything ready for that, the festivities on the 18th. So, together, we've planned the community tree lighting. There will be characters throughout the downtown. We're gonna luminary on the sidewalks from Chicago to almost Main Street, not quite Main Street, I mean, almost Jackson on Main Street, and then Jefferson to the library, because there's activities in the library that evening as well. And those activities will, we're very fortunate that Blessed Sacrament Junior High Track Team qualified for state, and they're gonna come and light the Christmas tree for us. So, we have a lot of young people that we're trying to get to come downtown. And there's coupon books that are gonna start being able to be used that day that will run through the end of the year. And we have drawings that are gonna be a combination of the I Shop Morton, small business, and the Holiday Asl, where people have a coupon, they can go into the shops, sign the back of it, and they're eligible for a cat for four Chamber of Commerce gift checks for $250. So, there's lots of activities. We also gave you a sample. This is, this is an old one, we don't have our new one finalized yet, and this is the coupon book that we create that lasts until the end of the year. So, our residents are encouraged to shop in our small stores and keep our money in town. And we also have a coloring contest, and we're in cooperation with Health Solutions. The children are from the school district, and the homeschool children are going to be involved in that, and those will be on display.
Yeah, just a couple other things, as you can see on there. We have some other great partners. TCRC, they have their Spring Board Morton program, and their participants in that program will be wrapping the Holiday Asl presents for us. So, we want something to identify the participating businesses. So, we wrap very, very large presents to put out on the sidewalk, and so, we're able to bring in members of that program, and it gives them a great community project to be involved in. The Kowanis and the Key Club will do the letters to Santa, of course, the village. I think next meeting is gonna do the Shop Small proclamation, so we appreciate that support to Shop Small. And then, the Peoria Area Convention Visitors Bureau, they're providing a free shuttle with their mobile visitors center again. And just quick on the back, budget, very expensive to do events anymore, and so, we're able to pull our resources together and leverage some great opportunities for advertisement to provide benefit back to the businesses. And as you can just see there, that we're pulling together tourism funds, Chamber funds, and then, the Tourism Association funds, and a little bit of revenue for ads in our coupon book. So, anyways, that's, we want to keep it short and sweet, but we, it's great to have this partnership, and like I said, look forward to doing more of this. There's only so much money and time and resources out there, so we need to leverage it wisely and make sure we promote our community.
Any questions? If not, thank you. Leigh Anne, I think you're up next, too.
Yes, yeah.
Would you like to introduce?
I guess. Do it this time.
Who has the...oh, is it up here still? Okay.
Go ahead. You're, I think you're good now. Yeah, I think you're good.
You don't wanna do any other formal...again, no. Great to be here again for the EDC to provide our quarterly update. It's important to us to share with all the trustees and our community of our efforts in promoting our community and business growth. And so, this is our third quarter update, and this directly ties to our Make It Morton strategic plan, which is set for 2012 to 2016. So, we are winding down over those five years, and the next report I'll be able to give you is launching our next five-year strategy. So, excited to launch that one. This is always, turn it off, a good time to share again our vision and our mission and who's involved with the Morton EDC, so you can read through our mission there, but mainly, we exist to positively shape the future in Morton. And that's a continuous-changing planning and strategic planning that we need to do as things change so quickly now in our world and environments, and it's very competitive out there. So, we constantly need to be on the forefront and really bridging people and resources to make our headway. Our core goals there, really to sum that up, it's empowering people is what we do. That's what growth and economic development and community development is about, is empowering people with opportunities, the resources available, how they can reinvest and have opportunities to grow their people and their businesses, so... And then, as you can see there, our Board of Directors that offer a lot of their time and knowledge for our organization. Specifically, like I said, this is our Make It Morton five-year strategy, which is to develop high-quality job growth and sales tax generation. And again, this ends, the end of this year. So, to report some numbers that you have there in your packet, our goals over the last five years was 750 new jobs, and through September, we are at 778 and 75 there, which is an interesting number for job growth. But you'll see in the report there, Trace Rojas, which is the new winery, they have several part-time at various levels, and so, that's why they were at a quarter percent, and so, that bumped us up to the .75. And then, our other goal there is commercial construction, which is measured by the permits that are issued for industrial and commercial permits. We had the benchmark there of 43 million, and as you can see, we're tracking over 73 million through September, so great growth there. Increase in sales tax, 15 million was the benchmark, and we're at 17,8. And then, new business locations, we are now tracking 38. So, just to go through and highlight a few things that are in your report, as I mentioned, the job growth, we're at 778. as I mentioned, the job growth, we're at 17.25 this quarter. We had some micro grants that we issued out again. Trace Rojas, that was the winery, the cookery. They added six full-time or will be adding, a total of six full-time. And then 316 South Main, which is also Anne's on the side, Cotton Top, job growth between those two businesses. Also, the Enterprise Zone is a great attractor and spurs additional growth and reinvestment in the community. And there wasn't any new job creation, but as you can see there in your report, there were four businesses that pulled applications. And total project cost between all four of them was 17,000 for their total cost and then a job retention of 25. So that Enterprise Zone program continues to be a great tool for business expansion and attraction. Commercial construction, as we reported there, we're well beyond the five-year goal. Over this third quarter, we had 1,658 in new construction for the commercial and industrial permits. Some of those projects were Kaiser Electricol, the Pool and Spas, Profab, and of course, continuous improvements at Nestle. Sales tax, we generated about just under a million July through September. And you can see attached in the report there is the sales tax report that the Village provides as recorded from your payments from the state. Continuing on of other numbers there in your packet, business retention and expansion, listing out the various industries that we met with. Had eight business retention visits over this quarter. And always a great way to really understand what is going on in industries and specifically with our businesses. We're able to share workforce initiatives, concerns that they have. And then we always ask them, you know, what else do they need locally for any assistance? And how are they able to connect or how can they further connect with our community? Also listed in there, we had a great response to the last round of the facade grants. And as you're aware of, nine were awarded, some great projects that are out there and underway. So you can see there's proof in those dollars through the business district being reinvested into businesses that are really beautifying storefronts and creating new job opportunities and new business opportunities in our community. Business attraction, assisted four new businesses and responded to about eight business inquiries that are looking at various locations in our community. And obviously continue to help assist the listing agents and brokers working on the Kmart property, Star Transport, of course, the former La Fiesta site now, the Field Shopping Center, and then the few vacancies that we have in our downtown district. Also in your report there, I won't read through them, but recently I attended the ICSC Chicago Deal Making Retail Conference and just a quick listing there of direct contacts that I had specific conversations with while I was attending that conference on sites in Morton. And the other thing, workforce pipeline, listed there, two things to note here. Morton Mentor, this is a program that has been established through our leadership program that we do through the Chamber. And it's going to be a great local program that will connect business mentors with high school students to really help build their career pathway on whatever industry or job that they are seeking. Will match them up with a mentor so they can get firsthand experience in that place of business and have a business mentor that they can really ask those questions of, what do you do on a daily basis? How did you get there? What type of college? Do I need for this type of job? How can I enter the market? And really just be another sounding board for them on career opportunities. And we're looking to launch that in January. And then just a quick update there for, from DCO, the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, they have their new public-private partnership now called Intersect Illinois. And they're actually now out hitting the streets promoting Illinois. For several years, it was frustrating attending conferences and the state of Illinois was not represented at those site selection opportunities. And now they're able to be out and about and start recruiting themselves. So that's great. And final update there, I'm excited about this opportunity. Again, speaking of partnerships, development planning, we had one initial meeting, but we'll be on a regular basis with our Business Development Committee in conjunction with Village staff of Craig and Roger to look at development opportunities throughout our community. And really looking at what sites are available, what opportunities are best fits, what are some hurdles for development so we can prepare additional resources and dollars around those hurdles? And possibly, hopefully even go out and offer those opportunities directly to developers to spur interest on them developing various sites. So we're going to meet here again this week and go, hopefully pick a handful of sites and really have a task team that will spend a lot of dedicated time directly on those sites and how can we further develop those for new growth. As we mentioned, and Sam and I have had several of these conversations on how important the sales tax is as a funding resource and the changing in the retail industry and how many people shop online now and the shrinking in retail space and how important experience shopping is today. So it's something we need to be aware of and looking in the future, integrate that into our planning as well. Same with residential, the trends of the type of living the young millennials are interested in looks different. So we need to ask those what-if questions and what does that look like five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road? Few other things in the works. Again, another great opportunity for downtown Morton. It really has some mixed-use development opportunities. There's been a lot of great development around the country on live-work districts. And I know Rod and I have had an initial conversation on this and really looking at how can we expand the opportunities in the downtown district. There's a lot of homes surrounding our downtown district and a lot of business owners already living above their business or in conjunction with their business. So what are those opportunities? So I think that's another area that we need to hone in on and understand, how can we build that quality of life and the live-work opportunities? And of course, we're all excited to hopefully wrap up the Memorial Plaza. Save the date for December 7th, that will be our ribbon cutting. We don't have all the details worked out, but December 7th is the date, done or not, right Craig? And then of course, there'll be opportunities with the AC Church Lot. Business District Commission, there's a lot of great conversation there on how to reinvest those dollars and is that through another program or additional community development projects? So further conversation there. We talked through the workforce pipeline. Also this month, the Regional Strategic Manufacturing Group, which I'm a part of, held their annual manufacturing career expo. And Precision Planning and Morton Industries were two of the tour sites for the career expo. So it's great to have excellent participation and engagement from our community on that. Went through the retail there and then also a part of the Regional Workforce Alliance Employer Services Team. And in your packet is also kind of the response services that the Career Link puts together. Recently, there was news on GND, on jobs, a lot of lost workers there at GND due to the loss of a Caterpillar contract. And there's already a team in place, as you can see in your handout, they call it the Rapid Response Partners, that are already working with those employees that will be losing their job at GND. And I also know that GND has also began to help them on their time, build their resumes and also already contracted with the NAVACOR, which is a nonprofit organization on financial planning to really help those employees hopefully find local jobs and be ready to move on elsewhere. So unfortunate news there, but hopefully those employees will get well assisted and find jobs quickly. And lastly, I'll just open it up for questions. Overall, maybe a little bit slower on some areas than I would like, but I was busy in August welcoming our newborn little boy CJ. And so I was increasing our population, so. Any other comments or questions?
There being none, thank you so much, that was a great report, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is the point in our meeting when we ask for public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Also, I would ask anyone in the audience if they would like to remove any items from the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approval of bills and the minutes of the October 17th meeting. There being none, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Round the second. Any questions about the bills? Changes to the agenda? If not, would you call it, please?
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Daub.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring to the attention of the board. I have two appointments that I'd like to make. I have reappointed John Meyer and Kevin Roberts to an additional three-year term and would appreciate a motion by the board to approve.
So moved.
Second by Cap Jeff for Ginger, beat him out by a second. This is a three-person committee. It's an interesting commission actually, because you cannot have more than two people as members of the same political persuasion. And so we have two Republicans on there right now. And we are searching for someone to replace Tom Siren. And I know many of you know Tom, he's been an important person in our community. But he's having some issues that he's got to deal with right now and didn't feel that he could serve any longer. Or I certainly would have brought him here and hoped that could get him reappointed. Are there any questions about these two gentlemen? If not, would you call it, please?
Bluenier.
Yes.
Daub.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Another item, we're calling Resolution 1016. Morton Community Bank's Jean Anne Honiger, a while back discovered the old bell from the old township building that used to be on Jefferson, just west of Maine. And she has given it to the village, we accepted ownership. And she has said that her and/or the bank would be happy to fund building a little monument for the bell to kind of represent where the old township building stood. And it's a beautiful bell, so we're thinking of putting it right in the parking lot where it used to, where it actually used to be. She had asked, and I thought it was fair enough, that perhaps I could check with the board and see if the board would be interested in helping to fund this project. Just to put it into your head, the amount, it's, we estimate that it'll be $21,210.44. Craig's very detailed. So can I get a motion to put this to, what I'm asking for is, would the board be willing to vote to contribute to the project, this $21,000 project? And can I get a motion to put it on the floor?
So moved.
Second. Second by Sam.
We have paid for a foundation for it, haven't we?
Well, actually, when we were building the parking lot, we just went ahead and put the foundation in. It's just a small thing in one of the little flower islands. And it was easier to just go ahead and do it while everything was going on.
Was that two or 3,000?
Yeah, it's actually broken out in the agreement here in front of you. And it was a little over 2,000. We have not paid that yet.
Oh yeah, 2,067.
If I could add just a couple items.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Several items that kind of came, this kind of came up last second, so we're still trying to piece this agreement together a little bit here. But a couple items, talking with Dennis Ewald at Morton Community Bank in here is, just to clarify, the bell was actually donated to the village and MCB housed it for us since 2012. So we need to kind of clean that up in the agreement. And then it does reference in the agreement, you see it Memorial Plaza, that's just an oversight. It will be in the location of the old Morton Village Hall Civic Building, which actually the island down there is within the footprint of that. So it is right back where it was before. And then also in item five, it says Honiger, it is the Honiger family along with Morton Community Bank. So those items would have to be amended in this agreement.
I really was taken with it because we've lost so many buildings downtown. We just weren't able to save, so we've kind of lost our historical look. And part of this project is to put a very sizable plaque on there with pictures of the old facility and a litany of exactly what happened and what this was about. I think it's really nice for people to be able to go and look at it and say, oh, this is where that old building stood.
To speak to procedure for Matt, Craig mentioned a couple minor amendments that we needed to the agreement. As long as the movement and the second or if you will, are agreeable, you could adopt the resolution now to approve the agreement as amended. It's small minor changes that we can take care of without having to bring this back for you.
Yeah, as amended per Craig.
Well, the important thing is, are we willing to share in the cost?
Yes.
Okay. And just how much are we willing to share in the cost? Would half be appropriate? Feel like I'm bidding on something.
Yeah. Why don't we just make a nice even round number?
Okay, what do you propose?
I think you threw the ball over here. Let's see, I'm looking for the page where we have the money. Well, the foundations, we're paying for the foundation, Craig?
That's part of.
Or is that just?
That's already.
That's part of just getting authorization to do that at the time. We're not necessarily paying for that yet.
Okay.
A little bit of risk there, I guess.
15, come on, let's move on. No one wanted to say anything, 15,000.
15,000 out of the 21?
Yeah.
Anyone like to comment, suggest that's too much, too little? No, you move 15,000, can I get a second? I mean, is that okay to the people? You made the original motion, is that 15,000 okay?
Yeah.
And you made the second, so 15's okay. Any discussion? Call it.
Daub.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
The eyes have it? You know, I think it's really appropriate because normally I'm the cheapest guy in the room, but I've got to say that Jean Anne had said, even if you don't contribute anything, she's going to go ahead and pay for it and do it. And I think when somebody's willing to do that for the community, we can still...
You tell us that before we came up with fifteen thousand.
That's why I didn't tell you.
I was checking.
All right. I have one last item, it's not on the agenda. This one is just kind of interesting. There's a lady that lives in town here named Deborah Morgan, she's been a citizen for years, and she's worked in the bowling business for twenty-five years. The Peoria Women's Bowling Association is going to give her a big award for her contribution to bowling, but more than that, because all during the time when she was putting together those tournaments and events all around the country, she was always bringing the kids along and getting the kids involved in bowling. And so now the league is going to give her an award. And I had written a letter from the community, from us, honoring her for getting that award. But I thought it was interesting, one of our folks is running all around the country doing that. Village clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief of police.
Also nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporate counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Fire and emergency.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works.
One item tonight, Your Honor. I'd like to ask for approval and acceptance here. I'd like to waive formal bidding and acceptance of the proposal from Sherwin Industries, this for a new crack sealing machine for the street department in the amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. This also includes the trade of the existing one that we have that's from nineteen ninety-nine.
Can I have a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom Dobb. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, this has been budgeted, this is a little bit above the budget. I sent a memo out to all of you, just kind of an oversight as we get comfortable with things. But this has been on the list in my time here over the last five years as a budgeted item to use it until it drops. And I think it's time, it's up for some much-needed repair, and there are some significant safety items as this machine heats up to four hundred degrees, there's a lot of safety concerns. This is a major part of our operation, our pavement preservation program, so this definitely extends the life of the pavement. So we use it at least two months out of the year, at least three guys at a time filling cracks throughout town. I'm a huge proponent of any crack in concrete or asphalt, you fill it, period. So I think this is something that I'd like to move forward with, and hopefully the next one we can keep for another seventeen, eighteen years.
And the crack sealing has drastically improved the amount we've done the last ten years. I mean, we've kind of proved that you have to do that. Years ago, we didn't do much of it.
There's a lot of new safety features on this, as it's, like I said, seventeen years newer, a lot of safety features, pretty much a three-button system, anybody can run it. So pretty, it's a nice piece of equipment. This is the Cadillac, I'm not going to hide that either. This is a nice piece that, you know, we'll get a lot of use out of.
And it has a compressor with it?
It has a compressor on it.
Which I often didn't.
Yeah.
It's needed.
Yeah, Jeff and I have discussed this, and I know we've had a couple of small accidents with the other one, and that it's four hundred degrees, somebody's going to get hurt. Any other questions? Call it, please.
Hare.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Dobb.
Yes.
Anything else? That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Planning and zoning.
I have one item tonight, Your Honor. On October twenty-fourth, the Plan Commission held a public hearing for Keystone Morton Properties LLC, Villas of Hollybrook. Special use is for an assisted living facility and memory care just north of their current property at seventeen oh-nine North Main. I laid a little drawing off of our zoning map at each of your seats. Small portion of ground north, I kind of highlighted it there, you'll see, that's the area where they're seeking a special use, and it fits perfectly with what they have been doing there. And it was a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission, so look for your approval tonight, Your Honor.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion?
So Roger, is that entire site that they're on special use?
Just, well, if, after your approval, you see that little light line that goes right through the B? Everything, everything north and every, to the east, to Main Street, down to Highland would be the special use. So their existing site plus that little tract to the north.
Is all special use? Thank you.
Any other questions? Would you call it, please?
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Dobb.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Trustee Belsley.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Trustee Bluenier.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dobb.
Nothing on the agenda, but I do have a comment and maybe sense of the answer and get part of an answer. At the foundation dinner on Saturday night, Scott announced, you know, we've, the collection of eight hundred plus, a thousand for the plaza, which we've talked about, the dedication. Are they still, are donations still actively being sought to get to the million? Or are we going to have to absorb them?
Not actively, but a lot of the dollars have not been collected yet, so...
They're just pledges, then?
Yeah. So it's already...
But the eight hundred plus, the eight hundred and some thousand has been collected?
Yes.
Okay, and the others are pledged, outstandingly pledged? Okay, well, I didn't know that.
I might still be a little shy of the million, but I know we're looking at cost, and I think we're still in line to be okay with it is, but I know that there is a little bit more pledge money out there that has not been collected.
Okay, good, there's been some question about that, I thought we'd cleared up.
Is that it, Tom? Trustee Hare.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Herman.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Kaufman.
Just a reminder, the yard waste program is still open. We're getting a lot of compliments, so it seems to be working, so check the TV screen, has the hours and send procedure, so...
We need a short executive session to talk about, just briefly about some negotiating matters and a potential litigation, and the two, just for public consumption, the two are not connected in any way. Could I have a motion to go into executive session?
One more thing.
Yes.
It might be good to mention, for anyone that doesn't know, that the Cubs did win the World Series in a hundred and eight years. I lost my head, I should have said it earlier, but...
That's not bad enough, the election is tomorrow.
Yeah. It's a bad year.
That's all I have.
That's how you have baseball, Chris.
The baseball TV set.
Could I have a motion anyway?
Motion to adjourn.
Into executive session, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?